I'm the Council of the City of Glendale is now in session, but everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy.
Here.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
First item on the agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Don't see anyone wishing to be recognized in the chambers or on the Zoom. So we'll move on then. Consent agenda, we have two items, the approval of accounts payable and adoption of the minutes of our last meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
I'm moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Shaw, second by Alderwoman Bukovic. Any discussion? Without objection, the consent agenda is considered adopted. Move on to our new business. The first item tonight is the designation of John Fellows, our new Director of Development, City Development and Planning, as the zoning administrator, and I'm going to turn it over to the interim city administrator, Mr. Hoffman. Your microphone's not on.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. As you indicated, on February 28th, John Fellows started as the city's new Director of Community Development. As you know, Todd Stube will be retiring at the end of this month, and so we're fortunate to have almost a month overlap between the two gentlemen. In checking through the Code of Ordinances, I found a notation in our zoning code that the council has the responsibility of actually appointing the zoning administrator, which is a component of Mr. Fellows' duties and responsibilities. So it's on your agenda tonight to have you officially make a motion for approving this duty zoning administrator and John Fellows as that administrator.
Any questions for?
John is in the audience. Some of you have not met him, so I thought it would be important for him to stand up and introduce himself.
And you want to come up to the microphone and? If you just start talking into it, it probably is hard.
Sure.
Yep, there you go.
So I'm John Fellows. It's great to be here. You have any questions?
Did you have a question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, for those on the Zoom, the question asked was, does he like the job? And he said, yes, he's in his third week. So I noticed neither, neither of your microphones came on. So, all right, any other questions? Alderwoman Bukovic. Light microphone on on.
Have you heard any rumors about District One?
No, I've, I've, I've heard great things about all of the districts.
That's a good answer. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Fellows?
Welcome.
John, welcome. Thank you. Okay, the second item on our agenda this evening is a resolution expressing the Glendale Common Council's support for Ukraine and the people of Ukraine. The resolution was sent out to everybody in their, in our packets, and I did invite.
Point of order.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't do the designation. We didn't have any more.
Oh, we had the motion, but we didn't.
Hit high and that was it.
Okay. All right. So have we had a, do we have a motion?
We do now. I move.
Okay, move Alderwoman Shaw.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Mr. Fellows as the zoning administrator, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
After all that, is he still liking the job?
All right, our second item then on the agenda tonight is a resolution expressing support for Ukraine and the people of Ukraine. And I have invited a couple of guests to speak with us tonight about the situation, people who have some close connections and ties on the ground. So I'm going to invite Rabbi and, is it Olga? Okay. So as you speak, if you'll pull the microphone over and make sure you're kind of talking directly into it, the little red light will come on and, and then folks in the Zoom will be able to hear you. And actually Rabbi, I'm going to ask if you can give us, so Rabbi and I spoke last week, and the, the branch of Judaism that Rabbi Schmatkin is affiliated with actually originated in Ukraine. And so there's a lot of ties and connections with Ukraine, and you were giving me some updates last week, and I think it would be really helpful for the council to, to know what, what is going on with, with your community in Ukraine and what, what you know.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So my name is Rabbi Mendel Schmatkin. I'm the Executive Director of Lubavitch, Wisconsin. We have branches all over Wisconsin, but we're part of an organization that has branches all over the world, some 4,000 branches, largest Jewish outreach organization in the world. And we're part of the Hasidic movement that, as you mentioned, originated really in Ukraine. And ever since the fall of the Soviet, so during the time of communism, well, the, the first go around of communism, so religion was banned in the Soviet Union, and it was very, very difficult for anybody to practice any form of faith, particularly that of Judaism. It was, was really shut down. And so the whole practice of it went underground. And throughout this time, the Chabad Lubavitch movement had representatives there, but they were often jailed, imprisoned, oftentimes facing firing squads, et cetera. So through the 70-ish years of communism, it prevailed underground. As soon as the Iron Curtain fell, so Lubavitch, Chabad opened centers all over. And today, up until very recently, there were centers in over in 35-plus cities in the Ukraine, serving about 350,000 Jewish residents there. I personally have about 200 colleagues, people I went to school with, I went to seminary with, their fam, their wives, their children, who have been serving there for, in varying, from 30 years ago up until today. When this all broke out, so by the way, it's, 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 it has been an incredibly flourishing Jewish community, enormous institutions, thousands and thousands of kids in schools, and somehow there, there's still orphanages and senior centers and, and community centers. And in that part of the world, these, these community centers really are the center of, of a community for real. People are coming there for food and people are coming there for inspiration and for worship and for everything under the sun. When this all broke, I'm sorry? The education, yeah, certainly. And so when all this broke out, just on a dime, the entire organization turned from really primarily an educational organization into humanitarian organization. And the branches all over the world were tasked, they, they reached out and they said, look, we need help, we need funds, we need help, because just to understand, so obviously in wartime, everything changes, and to, to, you know, to hire a bus and to try to shuttle people from one end to the other. Whereas a couple of days before, it would take, it would take, let's say, four hours to get to the border of Moldova or Poland. Now it's taking, at times, it can take up to 50 hours. You're not allowed to be on the roads between six o'clock in the evening till six o'clock in the morning. There's a, there's a curfew, and anyone out on the road is shot by, by locals, by Ukrainians because, because of this curfew. So there are transit centers, and you're trying to get out, you're dodging bombs. And so they have this whole underground system where they leave a particular city, they have to take a unique route, it changes regularly, they have, they have camps, they have camps set up in the Carpathian Mountains where people will stay overnight. We have about four or five different camps in these, what we call transit centers, and each one has a capacity of about 1,700 residents a night. From the beginning of the, of the outbreak of this till today, we, our organization directly has taken out over 45,000 souls. Those, so it's really women and children, men between the ages of 18 to 60 are not allowed to get out unless they hold a foreign passport. Now, just to, just to put it into perspective, so people are running with their, with maybe a small suitcase, maybe a backpack. So families that were well-to-do homes, businesses, everything, they're leaving with absolutely nothing. They may, they may take a trip from Kiev to, to, to Moldova or to, or to Poland, and then they have to go from there to Romania. Just to put it into perspective, they come out in, in, in Moldova. So let's say that trip, which would usually take, let's say, four or five hours, now is taking, as I said, somewhere between 40 and 50. They're stopping some between 20, 10 and 25 kilometers away from the border. The bus drivers can't make it through the border because they're, they're males often, usually, and they cannot, they're, they're citizens, they can't get through. So they have to drop the people off. Very often, they're walking the last 10 kilometers, they're walking to get to the border. They come to the border, they're picked up on the other side by another bus. Again, this is all those who are, who have, you know, got these, these transits through our organization. So we pick them up on the other side, they're taken to Kishinov. Kishinov is the capital there, whatever, the large city there. Now they, in order to get a flight out of there to anywhere in Europe, or maybe to Israel, it's a, there's a four, it's about a 40-minute drive from Kishinov to Yasi, that's in, in Romania. Now that drive is 12 hours. It's a 12-hour drive. You have an eight o'clock flight at night, you got to leave eight o'clock in the morning. And so, and by the time they get to wherever they're going, to Germany, to Vienna, to Amsterdam, to any of these places, they are, they have been on the road usually for 50, 60 hours, very often have had very, very little to eat, little children crying, screaming. It is, I mean, these are, these are, this, this movie has been played in World War II, and it's being played out right now. And so I can tell you that our organization here locally, the moment we heard about it, probably day three or four, we started getting reports and we borrowed a half a million dollars. We, we went to the bank, we took it out against our, our assets. We went and we sent it over there knowing that it's going, I mean, that they have a triage center in New York and in Jerusalem, and they're literally fielding phone calls, saying, we need $40,000 wired in order to get a bus and to get 60 people out. And they're literally doing it this way, and the, the triage continues. The, the flow has slowed a great deal because those who want to go have gone. There's a lot of people who are stuck with elderly parents or these kinds of things, they can't go. But this, this continues, this humanitarian disaster. I mean, I was thinking about what would happen if they would, we put out the, the word, okay, we'll take 20 families over here. Thinking, what does it take to settle 20 families for year one? It's probably a million and a half dollars just year one. That's before helping them, you know, anything beyond that. And so you, you, you now, you multiply that just by our community, just in the Jewish community. Okay, so there's 45,000 people out, another 15,000, 20,000 people got out on their own, so you're 65,000 people. Let's say we get 100,000 people. The numbers are staggering in terms of what has to happen for all these people, let alone, we're talking about two and a half and 2.7 million that we're talking about now. And so that's sort of a, I mean, this is going on every day, we're getting reports every day of the different cities and where they're going and how they're coming. But it really is a devastating thing. And we have here in Glendale and in the, throughout the Milwaukee metro area, but here in Glendale, I'm going to hear from Olga, you know, many families who come from the Ukraine and come from that area of the world. And obviously, everybody's watching it and just in, in, in horror, just as we all are. And just, it's, it's, it's impossible to believe that this is happening in 2022. So we're very grateful that you all recognize this and that our, our community recognizes this. But I'm sure there will be, will be called upon to possibly to, to put a handout to refugees, to people who have nothing. And I think that we have to prepare ourselves for that possibility.
I'm Olga Soroka. I'm here, we are here for 30 years. So I still have accent. So if you, if there is any question about what I'm saying, please don't hesitate to ask. I will repeat or try to get my point across. We've been very lucky, established ourself. We, I think, doing very well. Came with our parents, our son, parents are gone. Our son lives in Minneapolis with actually Ukrainian wife. We are very, very upset. Of course, her family is there. I talked to her mother, chat online every day, trying to, their farmers. And there is older grandma, and they stay and they can't go. Our daughter-in-law is very upset, and she wants them to leave, and they, well, they have animals, it's a farm. And plus the grandma, and the generations of them lived on that land. So they're, they're a little younger than us, so they're in their 50s, and they're not living, they're, they're going, they, they working, actually, they've been working last few days, she says, we've been making some food for the army. I probably, I'm loud enough. And yeah, it's a devastation. There's no question, we were absolutely stunned, not surprised though, because it was coming, we could see it. But we were stunned. And in my mind, as a Jewish woman, it's my mother's stories about them fleeing Nazis, about, she was teenager, and they were fleeing Nazis with grandma, going all the way down south to Uzbekistan, literally had nothing with them because they actually, they actually lost, their train left, and they were at the station, so they, they had nothing. And I'm looking at these people, and I'm looking at the devastation, I'm looking at these little kids that being almost thrown into the, into the train, because even if the mother is not there, at least the child survives. This is unbelievable. I shouldn't say unbelievable, it's just, it's a nightmare. It's something that, that could be in some horror movie, I guess, and I would say, oh my God, some, some sick mind made it up. But it, and it's the, the scariest part of that is probably that the history repeated itself, that it's the same rake, so to speak, that they still are in now.
Here. Obviously, you know, you are all part of our community, and we certainly are heart to go out to, to you and your family and friends and everyone. Does any members of the council want to ask any questions?
I think I just want to comment that we don't realize how close we all are to people across the world until something like this happens. We work with offshore developers, and their headquarters were bombed. There's people that we work with for years that we don't know if they're safe, like they just, so it's, it's not just our local community, which is very apparent here. So thank you for being here and sharing these stories and telling us what's happening. But it's everywhere.
Right. Pull the microphone over so people can hear you. Yeah, there you go. Just when you start talking, the little light will come on. There you go.
And, and they making donations, and it's really, I, we live in a very good country. What can I say? We've been very, very lucky. And I'm not saying that because I'm trying to please anyone. It's, it is, that's how we feel. And yes, and the world became a very little place. Unfortunately, well, fortunately on one hand, and unfortunately on the other hand. So I think that we, either we realize it or we don't, but we all in that business there now, in that situation. Thank God we're far, thank God we don't have a sirens, but it's very shaky. Everything that's going on is very shaky. And frankly, you don't need.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and sharing your story with us. We, we do have a resolution. I'm just going to read the two resolved clauses, not all the whereas clauses. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Glendale adds its voice to the thousands of cities, states and nations condemning the attack on Ukraine sovereignty and standing in solidarity with the democratically elected government of Ukraine. And be it further resolved that the mayor and common council call on Glendale residents to stand with our Ukrainian neighbors and friends and offer support for their family members currently under attack in Ukraine or fleeing for safety to neighboring lands. So can I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please?
A load.
Second. Moved by Alderman Gelhard, second by Alderman Doherty. Did you want to speak, Alderman Schmalsling?
That was just.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted. And if you could, Rabbi, I know you're going to speak to one other resolution we have here. If, if you end up, you know, hosting families or bringing anybody in, please, you know, let us know. Okay. Thank you, Olga. Rabbi, do you want to pull the microphone over by you? Because we do have one more resolution. The other resolution, give me a second here to bring my agenda back up. Think I'm taking this slightly out of order on the agenda, but we do have a resolution or proclamation further down, designating April 12th, 2022 as Education and Sharing Day in the city of Glendale. And I know this was brought forward actually by, by some folks in your congregation. Before all of this started, I was, it reached out to me probably a month and a half or so ago with a request for this. This was before, obviously, the war started. So could you tell us about what, what you're asking us to support tonight with the resolution?
So as I mentioned, the, the, it's, it's actually very much connected with what we're talking about here with Ukraine, in that the Rebbe, the Lubavitch Rebbe, a really a world religious leader, born in 1902, passed away in 1994. He was instrumental in seeing to it that the education here in America, that it takes a higher profile. During the, the administration of Jimmy Carter, they, they turned the, the education profile into a cabinet position. And the Rebbe was instrumental in doing that. And ever since then, every president and every Congress, since the days of Jimmy Carter, and really for Democrats, Republicans, from all sides, they've recognized the date of the Rebbe's birthday, the 11th of Nisan in the Hebrew calendar, and that changes in the, in the Gregorian calendar as Education Day USA. And really, it's, it's about the ideals that the Rebbe believed in so passionately, and wanted, and, and tried, and, and built institutions and a whole, a whole network to, to support and to promote. The idea that education is something that without it, we were hopeless. But, but education doesn't just mean, as we've come to understand it, it's about having people get a good job. We think today of education is getting into a good college and being able to, to do well financially. And it turns out that moral education, the idea that people recognize and appreciate that being, in Yiddish, we have the word being a mensch, being a human being, being somebody who can coexist with others, seeing the, the spark of God in every single person, regardless of their background or how they look or where they come from or where they're going. This is the only thing that's going to deter us from sort of reverting back to a jungle-type existence. And so when we look at what's happening there in the Ukraine, and it's, it's literally, it's, it's because I can, because I'm stronger, because I have bigger, you know, because I have, I, I have my finger on a button, that's why everybody's afraid, and that's why I can do whatever I want. So this, this type of education, it begins in, for, in every, for every child in their home, it begins with every parent teaching a child. It begins in schools to, to this idea of character education, the idea of teaching a child that just because you can get away with it, just because you think you're smarter than the cop, that's why you think you're going to, everybody, this is not a way to live. The reason to live that in a, in a proper and good way is because God created all of us with an image of God in each of us. That idea, that underpinning of education is what this day is about. And as I said, that, that ever since, you know, Jimmy Carter's days, this has become a, what's known as Education Day USA. This year, as I said, will be 120 years from the Rebbe's birth. I know we're going to Washington, there'll be a huge bipartisan, in today's day and age, it's a pretty rare event, bipartisan, both, both leaders of, of both the Senate and Congress on both sides of the aisle will be present and participating. The Rebbe himself was a recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor, as the first religious leader actually to, to receive that. So it's, it really is something that's very appropriate in this day and age and in this time that we're in with all of this that we're facing, to reflect on this and to figure out ways to bring it into our own communities. Because we also suffer from things like violence and, 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 and all of this. And, and this is really a way to approach it.
The proclamation before us, I'm just going to read the proclaimed clause. There's a bunch of whereas as well that describe the Rebbe's life and, and, and the history of, of Education and Sharing Day. But the, the now for there, now therefore be it proclaimed in the city of Glendale, that Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 shall be Education and Sharing Day, and we call upon our residents to reach out to those within our community and work to create a better, brighter and more hopeful future for all. So that's our proclamation. I have a motion to adopt, please. Moved by Alderman Schmalsling, her second, second by Alderman Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Rabbi, thank you so much for, one, bringing Olga along to share her story, and thank you for giving us the update as well.
Thank you very, very much. I'd like to just ask that sometime in the future, we wanted to bring by something, a very special little something for each of the, the alder people here, maybe at the next meeting or the one after that. What we, it's what we call an ark, and we're, we're starting to do this in the schools. It's, 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 it looks like a little Noah's Ark. And the idea is that it's, it's Acts of Random Kindness Ark. And it's, and really the idea is Acts of Repetitive Kindness. It's to get into kids' minds and to their hearts, the concept that there are people who have less than them. And it changes the mentality of victimhood to, I can be part of the answer rather than part of the problem. And so I want to share that with you in a future meeting, if I can. I'll talk with you about it, Mr. Kennedy, and hopefully we'll be able to do that. And thank you all so much.
Our next item tonight is rezoning of 5812 and 5820 North Green Bay Avenue from a B4 Office Research Service Business District to an M1 Warehouse Light Manufacturing Office and Service District. We did receive this at the Common Council. This is one of a number of spot zonings around the city that we addressed one last year on Port Washington Road. This was the second one. We sent it to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing, and they unanimously referred it back to the Common Council. So the movement or the motion for us tonight would be to schedule a public hearing for 6:00 PM on Monday, April 11th. Can I have that motion?
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Shaw.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Our next item is authorizing the city administrator to proceed with property appraisals leading to the acquisition of a property located at 6379 North Sunny Point Road, and if necessary, a remnant parcel of land adjacent to the west designated as a gap on the survey map in cooperation with MMSD and the voluntary acquisition of properties agreement we have with them. Any discussion? Okay. Can I get a motion then to that effect, authorizing the city administrator to proceed with appraisals?
So moved.
Thank you. Move by Alderman Gelhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Shaw. You know, we've got a bunch of properties on Sunny Point that we've acquired and a bunch of others that are eligible in the future for acquisition. This is just moving forward with one of those. So, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Uh, next is, uh, as you know, tonight, we appointed Mr. Fellows as our zoning administrator and he was hired, uh, started a few weeks ago as the next director of planning. But our current director of planning, Todd Stube, his last day is March 31st. So we do have a proclamation tonight recognizing Todd Stube for his 24 years of service to the city of Glendale. And I'm going to read the proclaimed, the whereas is of course list all the stuff that Mr. Stube has done while he's been here. Um, and positions that he's held, but the proclamation is therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and common council that Todd Stube be recognized and thanked for his 24 years of exceptional service to Glendale. And granted, best wishes from everyone in the city on the occasion of his retirement. So can I have a motion to adopt the proclamation, please? Uh, move by Alderman Wheezy and seconded by Alderman Vukovich. And Todd, would you like to come up and address the council one last time? Anything you want to share with us as you retire?
Todd Stube. I just thank you, I mean, for the opportunity to serve here and build up a city, help build up a city. I think so many people have really been part of that. And I recognize that. And thanks. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stube. All those in favor approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosts. Motion carries. Todd, we did sign that. Everyone signed it except for Alderman Wheezy, who of course is attending virtually because he's out of town. But he will sign when he gets back and we'll get the, get the framed proclamation to you.
That mean he can't retire until he's signed?
I'll be back in August.
And I also tried to convince him that I don't like change, so he should definitely stay. You know, this is a psyche thing for me and he didn't care. He said he's retired.
Okay. All right. And then our final item of new business tonight is approval for the mayor to submit a grant application to Johnson Controls Foundation for the continuation of funding for Richard E. Maslowski Park. As you know, when we, uh, when we built Maslowski Park, uh, over $2 million of it was in contributions from local businesses. Johnson Controls was one of those businesses who pledged originally $900,000. Um, and their foundation at the time would not take any commitments more than three years. And so it was supposed to have been renewed after three years and renewed again after three years. As of right now, they have paid a total of 320,000 toward the 900,000. So this would be taking the remaining 580,000 and dividing it over a 10-year period. I have been working with the Johnson Controls Foundation Board. And what they've asked, what they've asked me to do is to submit the grant application. They no longer under the requirements of the 10, of the three years, they can actually do it for 10. So the bonds will get paid off before the city's fully made whole, but the city would be fully made whole at the end of a 10-year period. So but of course, with any grants application, I can't, none of us, we can't even direct, staff can't submit a grant application without common council approval. So I would like to ask for approval tonight to submit a grant application to the Johnson Controls Foundation. Okay, move Alderman Wheezy, second of Alderman Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Hosts, no. Motion carries. And it's actually done and saved. All I have to do now is log in tonight and click submit now that you've approved. So, all right. Next, there's commission committee and board and staff reports. I'm going to start with Alderman Wheezy since he's online. And then we'll go around the room here. So. Do you have anything to report?
Oh, thank you. There's nothing to report, uh, right now, but we do have a, an ARB meeting, Architectural Review Board meeting coming up later this week. So I will also endeavor to attend that virtually, but failing that Joanne Shaw will be, uh, pinching to chair.
Okay, thank you. I will start with Alderman Shaw.
North Shore Library will be meeting on Thursday, March 17th. Unfortunately, I will not be there as I will be working. And I have one individual on the music in the line who has submitted her resignation due to a conflict, which I will be getting forward eventually to the mayor and city administrator. And otherwise, everything else has just been doing its wheels as it should be.
Thank you. Alderman Schmelzling.
I hope everybody comes by here tomorrow to see the exciting Fourth of July committee meeting that we'll be having. It'll be at 6:30. We're progressing ahead with the finalization of the schedule of the event. We already landed on the time for the parade at the last meeting, but we have some logistics to work out for everything else. Still looking for some food vendors. So if anyone knows any good food trucks, please pass that along to me and I'll forward it to our food subcommittee. And it looks like the really, I will call them artifacts. Ticket sale booths are still in the yard. So if anyone has a roofing nailer, we might want to put some new roofs on those. But lots of things will be coming together for volunteers. So please go to the glendoe4thofjuly.com websites, maybe it's org and volunteer. Thank you.
And I do know the guy who built us.
Seemed to held up very well.
Great, thank you. Alderman Gelhard.
I think you're reporting.
Alderman Doherty.
Thank you for reporting the nightmare.
Alderman Vukovich. All right. I have a couple of things. ICC met earlier today. One of the things that was discussed was a whole laundry list of, uh, of bad bills, bad legislation. That was before the state assembly or the state senate. And of course, the legislature has ended its work for the year. And I actually made the comment of, I'm glad that they've ended their work for the year. It means they can't do any more harm to cities and villages for the remainder of the year, hopefully. So there are so many bad pieces of legislation that, that died because they never got up for a vote. So I'm happy to report that, that that came out of the ICC meeting today. And then, as you know, there is a fundraising committee that has been meeting every Friday for fundraising for the library. And I'm going to be making the very first announcement. This has not been public, but I did get clearance today from, uh, from the team to announce that former Major League Baseball Commissioner Bud Selig and philanthropist Mary Ann Lubar are going to be the co-chairs of the Building a Better North Shore Library Together Capital Campaign. They will be securing personal donations from them. They'll be giving personal donations as well as connecting with their network of friends and associates. Um, and then also there is now in writing the $4 million contribution, which is from the developer to essentially build the, the shell of the building. So at this point of the $8 million that the capital campaign is seeking to raise, at least 4 million of that is in writing in hand. And there are two co-chairs who will be sizable donors and are very, very excited about being a part of this project. So wanted to let you all know that we are moving, that the, the library is moving forward and very successfully right now with its capital campaign efforts. So and that concludes my report. And I will then ask if city clerk, do you have anything? Police chief, anything?
Nothing to report.
City administrator?
I do have a couple of items. First is to give you a heads up that at your March 28th meeting, representatives from Kine Architects will be here to present their findings on the library feasibility study. Second item is we were informed by the North Shore Health Department that our health area has fallen to the low category for COVID-19. So kudos to, to everyone for all their efforts.
Thank you. And city attorney?
Very briefly, I did receive a callback from the property over on Hubbard, finally on last.
Did I have you say all that again with the microphone on?
There you go. Okay. I did receive a callback finally from the owner of the property on Hubbard Street last Friday and had a good discussion with him and, um, a plan. We're going to be talking again this week. And I do believe they'll be able to acquire that property when the parameters that were discussed. So I'll have a more of an update at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Sorry, Alderman Wheezy, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I did, uh, forget that, uh, the library board, as Joanne said, is having a meeting. I will also be able to attend that virtually.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard?
I just had a, a quick question for the city attorney. Any updates on the Navajo property?
Yes. I talked, I talked with a lawyer for F Street and, uh, last week, and they think that they might be working through a an agreement to essentially resolve the remaining outstanding balance on the do resolve the remaining outstanding balance on the mortgage and probably surrender the property. And then they've got a couple of people that are interested in lining up to buy it. And our, um, essential, essentially our position there is that, um, you know, the, or the wedge that we have is that we won't, you know, resolve or dismiss the pending claim that we have unless there's a agreement in place that certain benchmarks, benchmarks are going to be hidden, permits are going to be pulled and certain things are going to be done on a timeline or schedule. Because they need to, you know, they need to resolve our other pending litigation as well. So, um, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to keep a short leash on. I'm going to try to keep a short leash on that. If nothing happens, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look at bringing a motion, um, you know, on, on the other raise option. But again, the, as I reported last time, the, um, F Street has sent out a contractor out there to button up the property. So it's not open to the elements anymore. So it's actually enclosed now so that no more damage can be done from the outside elements. So at least that's, you know, that's a little bit of progress.
And just to update the council, uh, you know, the, the neighbors showed up at a council meeting last year asking us to, you know, to raise the property. One of those same people actually has secured a buyer for the property. So ironic. But anyway, hopefully this will be resolved very soon.
I hope so.
Thank you, Alderman Schmelzling. Did you have a question? I thought you were raising your hand when we go. Okay. All right. Any other questions for the city attorney? All right. That concludes our reports. Just explained to folks, we are going to go into closed session. As you know, city administrator Rachel Sastrum left, uh, January 10th. Since then, we have been working with, uh, Daryl Hoffman, a retired city administrator who is serving as our interim city administrator while we undergo a search. Tonight, we will be reviewing the 20-plus applications that were submitted for the position of city administrator. And as with any, uh, job hiring process, this first stage at least is confidential. So we will, um, go into closed session, subject to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 sub C in order to review the city administrator applications and also to get some performance evaluation data on a city of Glendale current employee. So I can I have a motion to convene in closed session, please?
Moved.
Second, about Alderman Schmelzling, seconded by Alderman Shaw. All those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosts, no. Motion carries. Uh, just for the purpose of folks who are attending via Zoom or anyone who is here in the, um, love, in, in the chambers. We do not have any actions that we will be moving forward after we come out of closed session today. So there's nothing for us to vote on. It says here, reconvene in open session, regular order of business. There won't be any action on any closed session items. So just for those of you hanging out on the Zoom, um, just know that when we come back into open session, it'll be to adjourn the meeting. So thank you. All right. Uh, it was moved by Gelhard, seconded by Vukovich to reconvene in open session. We are now in open session. Having completed our review of resumes, uh, for city administrator candidates with our consulting firm. Uh, we don't have any, uh, business to bring out of closed session. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alderman Schmelzling, second of Alderman Doherty. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Hosts, no. We stand adjourned.
You know, we're going to stop the recording.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Dick.
Night, Dick.
Thank you for being here on Zoom.